Hello, 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 hello. We have a very special guest today and we've been trying to catch up for a while.
Yes, we have.
And Darlene Dawson is here and today, the hope is, we're gonna dive into the school board race and education. And one of the things that's interesting, you know, my wife's a teacher and she teaches in Arlington. And, you know, there's a lot of resource in Arlington, there's a lot of resource in Northern Virginia, there's a lot of best practices, and then sometimes the train can get a little bumpy on the ride sometimes. So hopefully, we can delve into that, but welcome.
Thank you very much, Paul. I appreciate the opportunity.
And say hi to all our wonderful YouTube Facebookers out there.
Hello, wonderful YouTube Facebookers and Motley Patriot followers.
Oh, absolutely. I don't know if I call them fans or just folks that can't not look at a car wreck when they drive down the highway. Maybe a little balance.
Either way, either way.
Now, you're, you're a music teacher.
I am.
And we both have that in common.
Yes.
I, music has always been an outlet for me, so we can get into that, but tell me a little bit about yourself from how, as a kid in school and how you found yourself a music teacher?
Well, I grew up in Western Prince William County back when it was like Orange, rural.
Bull Run?
Yeah, well, not quite that far west, but I.
Hey, Margaret?
I lived in Manassas.
Oh, Manassas.
I was born in Manassas and then moved out to the Noakesville area. Graduated from Brentsville District, which was our rural agricultural school.
That's where all the wrestlers were.
Yes, yes.
They were good.
We had a great wrestling team, yeah. Coach Kuzniewski, Coach K. And so I graduated from there and was involved in the drama and music and.
You know Ms. Bevel.
Yes.
She was my teacher in middle school.
Absolutely.
Part of why I got into music or kept going in music.
Fabulous teacher.
We had a great music and theater program in Prince William.
Wonderful, yeah.
I look back to Prince William and go, wow. There were, we had state thespian president Curtis Booker and actors. We had a pretty robust theater program. There was so much in Prince William and I always laugh, it was like the bedroom community for all the brightest and the smartest in governance in Washington.
Yeah, I think that's true.
Yeah, it was, it was.
It was a great place to live and a great place to grow up. And Brentsville District was just a very hometown community. I remember Noakesville Day with the marching band.
It was a country part of Prince William.
Very country, which was what I loved. And so I got involved there. I started playing the violin when I was in fifth grade and that just, you know, I have a knack for it and enjoyed doing it. And so I ended up graduating and going into James Madison University as a music education major. Graduated from there and then came right back to my hometown of Manassas and got my first job, which ended up being my only job. Taught there for 34 years.
And which, which school?
Well, initially, I was at Jenny Dean was the middle school, which goes back to, you know, the, it was a black school back in the day.
Oh, wow.
Yeah, so there's a lot of.
There was pre-segregation.
Yes, exactly. It was an old building and it was, there's a lot of history there, a lot of monuments and things there now too, to that period of time and how Jenny Dean opened a school specifically for the black students in there.
Oh, wow.
So it's a fascinating history. And then Jenny Dean got converted into an elementary school and they built the new Mets Middle. And so I moved there and spent most of my, the rest of my career doing middle school.
In middle school?
In middle school, yeah. I have a heart for those middle schoolers.
It takes a special character to, to run reins on a middle school student.
They're fun. They are fun. You get them on your side and, and, yeah.
Figure out their economy and what they like.
Yes, exactly. It's a fun, fun crew to deal with. I know our middle school teachers would, would agree, you know. You're right, it does take a special personality, but I think they're just, I just love that age.
There's something magic about that age because they're transitioning from tween to teen, you know, a little bit of toddler, a little bit of pretentious adult. Lord knows somewhere.
Right. Sometimes they just need a mama hug and then sometimes they want to just be independent and go.
Oppositional.
Tell you what they think. Sometimes oppositional, yes.
I was that oppositional kid.
Keeps us on our toes, but.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, but I had, had a great career there and went to George Mason University to pursue my masters. And that was not in music, that was actually in teaching. And so I got a lot of, you know, a lot of other insights into the world outside of music. And of course, even being a music teacher, you see so many of the, you know, different populations in the school. And I kinda have seen it all.
Well, music is a great equalizer to some degree. You can have kids that would never be together in my experience. And suddenly through music, it breaks all the barriers down and we're all singing together.
It does.
I suppose singing together is probably a good way to get along fundamentally.
It is, yeah. And it, it becomes its own sort of home away from home place where the kids, you know, they wanna come and hang out there after school or come early before school or come during lunchtime or it's just, especially for some kids who just can't have, can't find a niche somewhere else.
They learn success in that and they can branch from that. That was my experience.
Yeah, they really do. Perseverance and hanging in there and teamwork, all those things.
Although I had a few tough, tough nuts to crack as teachers go. Some of the band teachers could be a little tough. Different instrument.
Right.
Singing, you know, I guess it's more of a natural inclination. So, long time in the school system in Prince William County? So you've seen those transitions.
It was actually Manassas City.
Oh, Manassas City, okay.
Manassas had its own, its own little island in the middle of Prince William, it's Manassas City. So it was very similar to Orange. We had five, I think by the time I left, it was five elementaries feeding an intermediate. We had an intermediate school and then one middle and one high school.
So it's a tight community of educators? And I would imagine the same thing for administration?
Yes.
You don't, you can't hide in the, what is it? Diffuse responsibility doesn't exist in a system like that. And you know, that kinda brings us to, you know, your decision to get involved in politics or more specifically, education where it means politics.
Yes.
Great move.
Right.
They, they, it's, it's rough and tumble lately.
Yeah, and it certainly was never anything on my radar, ever. Up until, you know, 12 months ago, it was nothing I ever would have considered. But having been through 34 years of public school teaching and seeing the direction that things were going and I retired at an early age. I retired in 2017 and I was 56 at the time, which is early for retiring. And I really wasn't, I wasn't interested in leaving teaching. I was, I was, like so many teachers are, just completely, your soul gets sucked out with all of the additional regulations and responsibilities and things that are put on your plate.
Teaching is almost ancillary to the administrative state.
Exactly. The administrative state takes over and there's all these, you know, extraneous duties and things that, and it got to be where, you know, why, why am I doing this when my role is to be with students? And that's where my primary focus should be. That's where my time should be spent and not doing these other, you know, crazy requirements. And that's only gotten worse, I think, since the COVID shutdowns and, you know, it just, there is an educational bureaucracy in place that makes it very difficult.
So you've made this transition from being an educator to seeing how it's getting a little bumpy and then I guess your heart kinda opens up to these struggles and then all of a sudden, you kinda get taken over by the idea, wait a minute. If not me, who? If not now, when?
That's true. And I, I'm a person of faith, of prayer. And I, in prayer, the idea was suggested to me actually by someone else. Why don't you, why don't you think about running for school board? And I immediately dismissed it. It's like, nope, not, not my cup of tea.
Why don't I go get a root canal?
Exactly, exactly. Not something. And so, but, but once the seed was planted, it just would not leave my mind. And I knew it was God nudging me, the spirit nudging me. And so I prayed and I got, you know, sought some counsel, my family of course, because anytime you do something like this, the whole, you know, gang's all here.
Well, these are life-altering decisions.
They are. And it's very time, even at a, you know, a one district of one county level, it's been astonishing to me how, how much is involved in it. And how kind of, there's a certain amount of animosity that comes with some people who don't think you ought to be doing what you're doing. But the word that comes to my mind is compelled, absolutely compelled in prayer and counsel.
Well, there's always haters out there.
Well, yes, and, 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 yeah, I, I like to get along with folks, you know? That's just my personality is to, I'm a happy person and a peacemaker and I don't like to have the haters throwing the things out there.
But you seem to have the wisdom to get past this.
I, I think so. And I think that wisdom comes from God. And so, you know, I just pray and ask God to help me, you know, make the right decisions. And I know that this is something that, a path that he has set me on. So doing the best I can and the results will be up to him.
So this is an important sort of conversation because one of the things that, we do, we certainly see this in education is that there's this pushback. We run this with some of the, one of the other candidates, well, one of the other school board members, where there's some folks that don't like to see faith come into any decision-making at all. In fact, would advocate for the lack of all things of faith. And then there's others that maybe in the middle go, well, you know, it's a value system and it seems logical and rational. And then there's those that says, oh, no, nothing to do with it because if it is, it's bad. So it seems like you sort of not only have your faith, but because of your experience and because of the fact that you have been in the trenches and you understand what the problems are, that you both have your faith, but you also have your experience and your common sense and your wisdom to navigate these. So I, I know that you're, the candidate that you seek to replace has been kinda sitting in that seat for a while and that there's, there's a lot of support for you. I see your signs everywhere. And there's a lot of excitement about what you may bring to, because this individual's on the chair. So I think maybe you could delve into a little bit about some of the changes, the positive changes that you hope to bring moving forward.
Right. Well, looking at what's been happening in education in Orange County in particular, I started digging into the statistics, the data, where the rubber hits the road.
Right.
You know, what's, what's actually going on with our children? And I feel like nationally and here in Orange, education has just taken its focus off of the primary goal. It's not, it's, it's not an item on our agenda. It is the agenda.
This specific in terms of kind of like your core components of what constitutes an education?
So that's why, that's why my, my back to basics idea is all about getting students back to fundamental rigorous academics.
So focusing on education.
On education. That's why, that's why schools exist, is to educate. So, you know, we're graduating children who aren't reading and don't understand how to do basic arithmetic. Ever been to a store where the computers are down and they've tried to count change back to you or something like that? Usually they just shut it down because they can't.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Sorry, sorry. Take your money away.
Right, you know, math, science, obviously, technology in this day and age, all of those things are important. But I really just, I feel like we, we've taken our eye off the ball and we've, we've gotten into things that aren't the role of a public education.
Kinda like stuff that belongs in the home and not in the, in the curriculum?
Absolutely.
Now, you talked about auditing curriculums to sort of get a better sense of how the parents, because it's all digital now, so you can't look at your kid's book anymore.
No, exactly. They don't, they don't typically have books to bring home. And I think that's when COVID, you know, sort of pushed everybody into the digital learning and parents started to see what was going on, that, that sort of started this whole idea of, you know, wait a minute, what in the world is going on? And you know, if you look at the governor's report from May of 22, it's, it's titled "Our Commitment to Virginians" and it talks about what they call the honesty gap.
Right.
Where parents in the community think that we're doing, we're performing here, but when you actually look at those test scores and in Virginia, what the Board of Education did was lower what they call our cut scores.
Okay.
So that on our assessment test, we look like we're doing better than we are because now a lower score is considered a passing grade, a perfect, you know.
They put their finger on the scale.
Yes. And when you measure that against the national, nationally norm test, the NAEP, they call it National Assessment of Educational Progress, I mean, we, we are in some cases 50th out of the 50 states.
Sounds like the dumbing down of education.
Exactly what it does.
Not to use, I think that's a wrong term, but you know what a great ad.
Right, right. Yeah, so, I mean, we just have a lot of, of room to go, to return our focus and that's, that's really my primary desire, is to see schools educate our children. So that they graduate with, you know, we have kids who can't read and then, and then they become behavior problems because they, they're trying to mask the fact in, in class that they can't.
Compensate.
Exactly, compensate. And then they end up in trouble and then, you know, it's just, it's just a snowball effect. And if we can get them in particularly in the primary grades.
And I've heard this, early intervention matters.
Yes. And I, I'm encouraged that Virginia passed the Literacy Act, which will move us back to a phonics-based reading program, which I think is, is going to be critical.
So this is something that you're gonna kinda keep an eye on, should you?
Yes, yes. And in Virginia code, oversight of curriculum is one of the board's authorities, one of the responsibilities.
So your thinking is that the authority and the power that's given to the school board is something that you won't shy from?
No. And I think boards here in Orange, I've heard it from multiple people in my door knocking experiences, that here, the administration runs the board. And I've heard that nationally, that a lot of school boards just sort of rubber stamp whatever the administration brings forward. And I'm not, you know, I'm not denigrating our administration. I think we have some great administrators.
They probably got as hard a job as the teachers do on some levels.
Yes. But I do think that the board as a whole could better utilize that position. Yes, of authority to really.
Well, with your experience, you'll know where to flex and when to acquiesce.
Right.
Which battles.
Right.
Which hill to die on, so to speak, yeah. I imagine, I worked in education, I worked in the maintenance department and developed electronics department at Falkir. And the thing, and I share this story a lot, what I learned in working there, and I got nominated employee of the year, I think three different leaders, because I was bringing all these new electron, I brought Christmas presents to all the principals. New phones, new this, new that. So, obviously, thank you. But the point that I often make is that I learned that in, I could have two elementary schools right across the street from each other and the mood and the enthusiasm and the whole demeanor of the school was set by the leader in that school. And it was a shock to me. You would think as a kid, all elementary schools are the same, like a McDonald's, it's the same where we go. It's not. It's leadership.
It is leadership.
Now, what's your thoughts about sort of how do we identify the successful leaders? You, I, I read before that measurement, what do we do with the data when we get it? We have these organizations that are involved in our comprehensive planning moving forward. I had read some information about teachers filling out surveys and for all we know, that information, called the art center, goes in a fishbowl, ha ha. That's an inside joke. Some of you know that one. The magic fishbowl, once the information goes in there, never to be seen again. But what's your thinking on how we sort of engage our teachers? How we set a communication back and forth? I know you talked about not letting, not just having people talk at the school board, but having roundtables and communication, opening up this dialogue.
One of the things I've, I've really been frustrated by over the last nine or 10 months, going to every board meeting, is the number of people who come and speak. And, and I appreciate the opportunity. Obviously, the public comment is so important and the board, I know, is taking it all in. But there is no mechanism, as far as I've have found, of an actual dialogue between the public and the representatives. So to me, that seems odd. For example, right now, there's this big discussion about the TARP that was put up to block the football field.
Yeah.
And so people, you know, are asking, why, why did they do that? What, what is the point of spending?
Was it a security thing?
I, no answer has been forthcoming that I have said.
My thought, when I saw that, I thought, well, maybe they just don't want people to be able to see because the whole new thing about security for events and we've had those events in Richmond.
Right.
But yet, to your point, where's the dialogue?
We have people talking about, you know, it's now blocking access from some of our senior citizens who would park their cars there to be able to support the team or disabled people who had trouble walking there. And I don't know what the answer is because there has been no answer given.
We had that same problem with the shutdown at the high school and then the thing with the band teacher.
Yes.
So there's all these controversies, but there's no vehicle.
Personnel matters, I understand sometimes, you know, they're privileged and, and so they may, they may not be able to answer that question. But some questions, I think, would be fair to at least have a back and forth about since we are the taxpayers who are funding these schools.
Sure.
So I would really love to institute, and I don't, I don't know exactly what that will look like, but some sort of, you know, whether it's monthly or quarterly or, a friend of mine who's a board member in, in Powhatan said that she just sets up a, you know, every fourth Tuesday, she's at the Dunkin' Donuts for three hours.
Oh, nice.
People can stop in and share whatever's on their mind. So, I mean, maybe.
Kind of laissez-faire and anecdotal sort of people sharing.
Or maybe a more, you know, formal public meeting where, you know, it's all public record. I don't, I don't know what the answer is, but that's, I'm cogitating.
Right.
On what that might look like because I do think we, we need to have a little bit more actual dialogue and not just us stand there and talk at the board and they say, okay, and then go into closed session and, and that's the end of that.
So you bring up a good point and I've spoken to some candidates on supervisor for this as well. The idea is that there are other counties that have successes. Other, you mentioned Powhatan and Gushland, you know, went from insolvent to triple A bond rating. There's these conversations about, we know other areas have kinda taken the reins back on running their governmental agencies from leadership that are elected. So, you know, reaching out to other counties and seeing, seeing what are best practices.
Yeah, yeah. There are great ideas out there.
Yeah.
And I've been attending, you know, as, as often as I can, trainings and gatherings of, of people who are candidates or already seated board members to, to glean from them what's, what's working and what's not. So there's a lot of information.
Now, you talked about CTE and you went to the idea of not only CTE, but also advanced academic and, and career track and you even mentioned aviation. I wouldn't take it out of school.
I was just, I was reading an article and actually, a lot of the Northern Virginia schools already have these in place, these specialty schools, you know, where they have like different programs and that was one of the ones I had, I had read about. I thought, we have an airport right here.
Can you imagine light school for, for, for high school kids?
So when I read that aviation, I thought, how cool would that be? And we have, we have a perfect setup, it seems to me, to be able to incorporate that. And so many, you, earlier, we had talked about culinary arts and, you know, some of the wonderful restaurants and, and at Willa Grove or, you know, Spoon and Spindel.
They could get credit, school credit for working.
Right.
Report on their, sort of bring back their experience.
And there's, there's a big push, again, I think it's, it's national, but here in Orange, like at the Chamber of Commerce showcase, you know, the CTE facility and program was one of the huge topics of conversation that everybody wanted to address. And I guess it's been promised here in Orange for a very long time and people are frustrated that it hasn't happened yet. So how, how do we make that happen? And I know we do have CTE offerings here. I'm not saying it's not happening. But I've heard from our agricultural people that the ag program has a lot of room for growth and, you know, Orange is a, is an agricultural county. So why do we not have state-level contenders and regional-level contenders? You know, how can we fix that and address that and make it the best it can be for our students? And then all of these others. And I realize, you know, it's a small county, one high school, we can't adopt every specialty program out there. But I do think there's some room to look at that. And more and more, people are realizing that college, for some students, does not offer the bang for the buck that they need.
It certainly offers a deep financial investment.
It certainly does.
But not always with an ROI that we're looking for.
Exactly. And sometimes back home in mama's basement with no job, you know, so. But if we could get some of these programs in place.
But an angry Facebook account. Or Twitter. No, actually, now it's a TikTok, yeah.
Oh, yes, yes. But if, you know, if we could look at some of these programs that would give students, you know, internships, apprenticeships, licensures, by the time they graduate, then they can walk into some of these, these programs and be ready, you know, ready to, to start a lucrative career at age 18, 19, 20 and not have all of that college debt.
HVAC and plumbers are making money.
Exactly. And we need those people. We cannot survive without those people, so.
Let me unpack something, just because you touched on something a moment ago earlier and about bringing in CTE and bringing in these expansions of these programs. And the supervisor, the incumbent, Keith Marshall, has been talking about actually taking a fresh look. And maybe instead of having one high school on one end and one on the other, staffing issues. The conversation now seems to be, well, wait a minute, could we look at a, a fresh approach to a facility that's not on a limited footprint, that's not kind of trying to reconstitute old buildings and looking at things fresh? A new high school complex with a proper football field and a proper basket and a sports complex? Is that something that you would embrace?
I did, I did read Keith's proposal and it's, it's a fascinating thought because the current high school facility, obviously, was built in 1952 or something.
Well, we like our grandma's 75, but not our schools.
Right, exactly. And so it's, it's overcrowded, has been for a long time. There's no, no way to expand.
So how many, how many years is it? When was it built?
I.
50s?
I think 50, 52 sticks in mind. I could be wrong. Some of the Orange County people will say, no, it was 19.
Yeah, we're pushing into 75 years now.
Yeah. So, you know, the building is aging and it's.
So it could be 100 years pretty soon, whatever the real number is.
And one of the, one of the solutions I've heard tossed about an awful lot is the purchase of that Harley-Davidson building, which is gonna be on the market.
Is that really built to be a school?
No, I've, I've, I've talked to some people who have said that it does not pass code for students to be able to occupy.
Is it secure? Well, I know there's a big thing about, so, you, schools need to be secure. And one of the dilemmas with old school buildings is that sometimes, I know there was a, a concern about a coal pepper incident. And we need security.
We do.
It's the modern model. There are modern school buildings that kinda take, in the old days, you had a gun in your rack in the back of your pickup.
Right.
Nowadays, you'll be in a federal tentatancy. Yeah, exactly. But we, but then if you try to build two schools, then you have to staff two schools. Two cafeterias, you just go down the list.
And if we were to build a school at the eastern end, that's not gonna solve the problem of the aging facility that's, that's been here forever.
So the idea is to just take a fresh look at the whole subject, centralize it?
That, that's what Keith Marshall's proposal is, is to think about, and they say the central area of the county is right around the 52220 interchange there, near the Roosevelt area.
That's where I live.
Right. And.
Well, there was a high school there back in the 30s.
I did not know that, but I read that recently.
There was a big article, I had read, I did a video on it, where it was, it was quite an investment back in the days. I think they said $36,000 for a building, which back in 1930 is a lot of money.
Right, right.
But that it had, it was an advanced facility. They were pretty proud of it. I think when they brought 20 and they just knocked it all down.
Just decided to, yeah. Well, according to what, what I've seen that, that Keith is, is talking about is not demolishing the current building.
Okay.
But.
Utilizing it.
Repurposing it as a community center, you know, the field house and, you know, maybe a skate park. I know there was a skate park, you know, plan going in, in the works. But maybe making it more of like a complex.
Something that's available for the public.
That's available to the public and, and I know the Board of Supervisors has been interested in, in providing something.
So not so much surrendering it, but finding a, a better use for the property based on what it could, what it can do.
Right.
Without spending a lot of money.
And then building a new school that would house a CTE facility as well as, you know, big enough to, to serve the needs of the students.
Well, the argument is, the sooner you do it, the cheaper it is because the longer you wait, the more expensive it becomes.
Yes, that's true. But the expense of it, of course, would be the kicker because we're probably talking, I don't know, 150 million?
Lord knows, it's all expensive, yeah. But what are our kids worth? What are our grandkids? What are, I mean, legacy matters. I mean, I'm, I'm getting younger, so. No, but I, you know, the conversation I hear from a lot of people is, it's like, well, at one point in time, do the kids matter enough to sort of, sort of think? Because they're our future.
Yeah.
Definitely with the CTE, I think, is a nice thing. I didn't know, you know, whether or not, oh, yeah. So one of the things about teacher retention and the push and the paperwork burden, no planning periods, meeting demands, there's a lot of burden on teachers now.
There's an awful lot. And I just, I have a teacher friend here in Orange County and, and she said to me last weekend, I can't believe it's only September. She said, we're, we are already drowning. And she was talking about how, you know, there's no long-term sub and so teachers are pulled to cover, you know, other classes and lose their planning periods or, and I've been there and done that. I know from being inside out what that looks like.
Well, losing planning period is now the rule, not the exception, isn't it?
It seems to me, it, you hear it all the time.
Yeah.
And, and it's difficult. I mean, schools in Virginia are having trouble just staffing their buildings. I think here in Orange, we're probably in pretty good shape with actually having enough hired people to teach. But we don't have all of the, maybe some of the extras, the substitutes.
So I'm gonna poke the bear, okay?
All right, poke away.
I'm gonna poke the bear. So one of the dilemmas, and this sort of pops up, and it's a delicate thing, but is we get into new teachers. And there's a lot of sort of conversation right now regarding what constitutes a full curriculum and where the focus is. And you touched on that earlier. Do we want a middle school and an elementary school and a high school that really focuses in into a lot of these acronyms now of all these sort of social agendas, political activism? Is that appropriate in a school, do you think?
No, I don't think it's appropriate in a school at all. And, you know, full disclosure, I, I've talked earlier about being a person of faith and a person of prayer and I am a conservative and I do have the endorsement of the Republican Party. And even though the school board seat is a bipartisan seat, and I agree that it should be. I think disclosing my party affiliation and, and my conservative vent, um, speaks to the transparency that I want to put forward. So it gives people a starting point of, you know, knowing where, where I stand, what I think.
So you identify with the Republican Party's values?
I do.
By and large?
I do. Faith, freedom, family, education.
Now, some of the candidates, uh, maybe not school board, but other candidates have, um, sort of taken the moniker of independent, but yet have a lot of funding from Democrat.
Right.
Uh, uh, large-scale Democrat donors.
Right.
Have you received any money from the Republican Party on any of this stuff? So are you self-funded or just a little bit of local?
I have self-funded somewhat, but I've, I've also got, you know, mainly small dollar donors of, of, of my church and my family and.
Okay.
And community people who have heard my message and, and are behind me. Um, so, but no, I have, I don't have any kind of PAC money or.
Right.
I mean, I, I can't say, I did have my aunt who lives in South Carolina send me some money.
So, I, this pops up. Yeah, out-of-state money is people that know you and care about you.
Yes, yes.
And wanna see you succeed.
That's the only out-of-state that I've, that I've, um, researched.
Well, that's nice to know that, you know, everyone goes, well, if you get this big money, who are you beholden to? And, uh, people, oh, nothing, it's just, you know, it's no big deal.
Right.
But yet, we all kind of locally go, well.
People say, and I've had it said to me, you know, you're running, obviously on the ballot, there is no party affiliation listed beside my name or any, any of the local, um, names. However.
Where do you stand?
I've been very honest about who I am, what I believe, and I've said, you know, this is who I am and this is what I believe. And if you agree with that, then I would appreciate your vote. And if you don't, I'm okay with that too.
Right, right.
I'm going to be who I am and I'm not gonna bow at anybody's altar of whatever, you know, their agenda might be. And speaking of agenda, I feel like a lot of agenda has been pushed into our schools. And into our curriculum, which is why I would love an audit, um, because it's very difficult. You know, people, people will say, well, uh, when CRT, Critical Race Theory, was, was this big, um, argument in Virginia. And teachers would say, well, we're not teaching Critical Race Theory. Well, obviously, there is no class titled Critical Race Theory. However, the tenants of Critical Race.
There's a philosophy.
Yes, and it's buried inside so much, so much of the curriculum that's pushed through the Virginia Department of Education. If you go on their website, you will see all kinds of that equity type.
This is kind of the post-Northam sort of influence?
Yes, and, and during Northam too. Um, and so I, I, I really don't think any of that belongs. And I have people say to me, well, get your politics out of our schools, or don't bring your politics into our schools. I believe the other side has, you know, pretty much overtaken education and is constantly pushing their politics into our schools. Through things like, um, diversity, equity and inclusion.
Right.
And it's, you know, when I say, and I, I wrote a letter to the editor, you can find it on my website, um, where I explained, I, I, I can't support that. Because I do not believe, um, that we ought to be looking at people and, um, judging them or, or hiring them or treating them one way or another based on skin tone or based on, you know, I, I want the best person, the most qualified person. And I want every student in our schools to feel valued. I taught in a minority, uh, majority, minority school. And, you know, not being braggadocious about it, but I was Teacher of the Year twice in my building.
Wow.
And it, it's because I related to every kid and every family and every administrator and every.
You were meeting the person, the family where they were.
Yes.
The fundamentals of how you teach.
Right, exactly. And, and so I didn't look at a child and say, you know, your skin is brown and therefore I must treat you differently. Or your skin is white and therefore I must treat you differently. Um, I just.
Division is not your thing.
Humanity, we are all God's children. Um, and that's just the way I see the world. And maybe it's, you know, people say I'm naive and. But even, you know, like history, uh, that question came up at the Chamber of Commerce, um, showcase too, was, you know, what do you think about teaching? Um, I forget how it was worded, but teaching the facts of history. Well, I, I believe we should teach the facts of history. And a lot of it is ugly.
Good, the bad and the ugly, yeah.
Nasty. Um, but if you go back through all of human history, it's full of war and killing and, you know.
It's messy.
It's messy. It's very messy. And America was messy too.
Right.
But America created an opportunity that had not been seen. Have you ever read the book, The Five Thousand Year Leap?
I haven't.
You have to read that book, uh, because it's all about how the, the principles of, uh, there are twenty-eight principles laid out that our founders put in place that advanced the world five thousand years.
And on that, shouldn't we give a test to kids that graduate from school on, uh, on, uh, the, what is it, the citizen, the ten questions?
I just, I just read this weekend, I took the test and I passed, ten out of ten.
I'm scared to take it now.
Yeah, it was, um, the citizenship test that's given to immigrants.
Right.
Who are, uh, applying to be citizens, of course. And it's, it's a ten-question test. You have to pass by getting six out of the ten right. And the statistics were that thirty percent of Americans could pass it, of, you know, natural citizens.
Right.
Um, or US-born citizens. And three percent of high school students. Three.
So what are we teaching in high school?
That's, that's what I mean.
Wow.
Um, uh, you know, I really, back to basics, back to the fundamentals about what kind of government do we have?
Right.
Why was it founded? What were the struggles that our founders had trying to, to balance all of this?
Do we have power to control that curriculum though? I mean, as a school board, we do.
Yes. We absolutely do.
Sounds like a Herculean task to do that.
It is a Herculean task.
Cause you're going up against.
People think we don't, and that's, that's where the.
Now, we've got this organization from Charlottesville that's driving our comprehensive, what is it?
Strategic plan.
Strategic plan.
Yeah, and that's been adopted. Well.
Does that work against or for this sort of thought process of trying to get back to the basics?
Um, there were some things in the strategic plan, I, you know, went through it and read it all and, and spoke to it at the board meeting. There are a lot of things in it. For example, the wording comes up multiple times about, um, uh, hiring those teachers who are reflective of our community. When I hear words like that, red flags go up.
So we're gonna hire a bunch of crazy rednecks that drive in the back, the pickup truck?
Well, that was my question. What does, what does that mean, reflective of our community? I don't, I don't understand how that's measured.
Who determines what's reflective?
Exactly. That's, that's my question.
Who is the arbiter of reflectivity?
Very good question, Paul.
Yeah, yeah. Who is the arbiter of reflectivity of the community?
So, so Cambridge Services was hired.
Right.
And we paid them, I don't know, in the neighborhood of twenty-four or five thousand dollars to come in.
Is that one time and fits all or?
No, I think it's a five-year process. So I think somewhere down the road, there's, you know, a, a relook at it. And what are the next steps for implementation and that kind of thing? So there may be more, um.
So is community, I, I, I've heard different things about that. I, I get the sense that community involvement is more optics than actual influence. Is that an unfair statement?
On the strategic plan?
Yeah.
Well, I think a lot of the community, uh, participated and were very invested in it, um, and, and did some good work. But I feel like the framework was already there. If you look at Cambridge, what Cambridge did for.
Isn't the answer baked into the process?
I, I, I do believe that it was. And we pay a lot of people a lot of money. And I think our strategic plan probably should have come from us.
So don't we have more administrative overhead than we had, say, in two thousand?
I went digging, again, on the VDOE website and, and looked up a lot of, uh, statistic. There, there are Excel files galore. If you have hours and hours and hours and hours of time, check out those files that are on the, the, uh, that's Virginia Department of Education website. And so I went back and looked at, uh, actually, I, I just happened to have that here with me. Um, some of the charts that I compiled, so I would have a better sense of where we stand.
One million pages.
And so, um, yeah, I went back to twenty-twelve, because as you mentioned earlier, my opponent has held the seat since twenty-twelve.
Since twenty-twelve.
So I was curious, you know, what, what direction have we been heading, heading in that, the time that she has held, held the, the seat? Um, and so I went back to twenty-twelve and from twenty-twelve until twenty-twenty-two, that ten-year period. Our administrative costs, based on those Excel files, reports that we file with the state, our administrative costs have gone up eighty-nine percent.
Wow. Now, is there a reference to teacher salaries or?
Significant number. If you wanna dig deep enough, you can get into, it's all there, that's all public record.
But we are, we do have more administrative expenses.
Yes. And so my next question was, well, how many people do we employ at the Taylor Administrative Complex then? How many administrators and staff of, you know?
Does it numerical count? Head count?
Um, it looks like it's right around sixty-something. Um, it's, that's not really apparent information. I've been on our school division website and looking up, you know, teachers for each building and staffing for each building.
Is there not a lot of transparency when you start digging into stuff?
I, I, I think there's a lot of, yeah, not, it's not very transparent.
You filed some FOIA to try to sort of, try to get information. What's some of that stuff that you find in uphill battle? That's important information that you're looking for?
Well, one of the things was about, um, the, the administrative cost at the, the Administrative Complex. Uh, for Orange in, in particular. And I went to VDOE for that too, but it's interesting. And I'm not quite sure, I filed a FOIA with Virginia Department of Education and they said, well, we don't keep that information. We override it each year. The, which makes no sense to me.
We override it? Nothing to see here, folks. Pay no attention to the man behind the curtain.
Right. Um, and so, when I was checking.
I remember that one. Did you do the dishes? I overwrote that, uh, answer. Thank you.
When I was checking in the spring, it had listed for staff of Orange County, twenty-eight positions. So we're talking superintendent and director of transportation and director of secondary educate, you know, all those director roles. Um, and then the, the admin assistants for those people and, you know, that kind of thing. So there were twenty-eight listed and I thought, well, you know, it seems like there's more than, than that at our Administrative Complex.
Isn't that a human resource accessibility to that, those numbers?
It is. It's pub, it's all public record.
Yeah.
It, it has to be public record because they're public employees.
So you're, you're, I guess if I'm reading between the lines, you're suggesting that you'd like to see a little bit more.
I would.
Transparency.
Right, I would. Um, if you go to our school division website, I can't find any place, maybe I overlooked it. But I can't find any place that talks about who actually works every day at that building. But, um, through some more digging at, you know, you can kind of put the pieces together if you have enough time to sit there and stare at it long enough. It looks like we're paying a, a little over four million dollars in salaries.
Wow.
At that building, which doesn't have, I mean, there's head start there, obviously. I'm not talking about that, but I'm talking about people who are working in that building. Um, that's a pretty significant amount of salary for a division the size of ours, I think.
You, you strike me.
I just wanna.
Well, but you strike me as a person who likes to get into details.
Yes, I do.
And so a little bit of the, uh, what is it, the Columbo, why, why I'm here, uh, oh, by the way, what are you doing with all that money? Um, um, do you think that there is an opportunity for improvement in how these sort of things are managed collectively? Are there, is there waste? Are there, I mean, are these the things you're looking for?
Those are my questions. And for those wastes, how can we, how can we, are there, are there positions? And I don't wanna see anybody lose a job. I'm not advocating that at all. But I'm saying, we have to be smart and we have to answer this question with every decision. How does this improve?
Accountability.
How does this improve the education of our children? Um, and I'm not so sure that having sixty-something people in that building. And again, I'm not saying that they don't have a role to serve, but is there a way to consolidate some of that or is there a way to?
Is it working effectively?
Right, is it effective? Right. And is it the best use of our, our tax dollars? Right. Because.
And so, back to your audience.
Organizational chart is the, the taxpayers.
Is there an organizational chart?
There is an organizational chart.
Gets into the weeds on, on staffing?
It doesn't go too far in the weeds, but, but it has the school board at the top and then the superintendent. But what's not listed above that is the taxpayers who, you know, who pay those people.
Who writes the check.
And very often, as here, as it is in, in much of Virginia and the nation, I think the, the superintendent and the school board have rolled. You know, those roles need to be flipped back to their, to their correct, um, correct position.
Well, and this just sort of falls into kind of the nature of, 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 uh, a lot of people tend to stay in their lane and make your boss look good. And that process just keeps perpetuating. So, well, it'll be interesting. I'm looking forward to the election and I hope that, um, uh, uh, that you find that, uh, um, that outcome you're looking for. Now, um, do you have, I, I wanted to go over a couple of notes here. Um, we talked about talking, uh, reflective, yeah, we talked about that. Discipline, quarterly review. We got into the social agenda a little bit. Um, you did talk about, uh, teachers, uh, I don't know if we, we may have dealt, could we delve into a little bit more about teacher, um, observations? And that, uh, questionnaire or the surveys having influence? Is that something that the teachers could?
Well, I remember.
I'm a teacher, I'm working in Orange County, I don't feel like I'm being heard. Well, I have audience with the school board.
Right. And I, I've addressed this with the school board too, because one of, one of the most glaring examples to me was the adoption of this current year's, uh, school year calendar.
Okay.
So they put surveys out to teach, to the staff, teachers, staff, um, and reported back that it was in the, I have it written down somewhere, but not with me. And the eighty, eighty-something percent of teachers said, we prefer calendar B. But at the school board meeting, the superintendent said that he and his cabinet preferred calendar A because they felt it was more instructionally sound.
Mm-hmm.
And so the board voted within superintendent five zip.
Right.
To approve the one opposite from the one the teachers had said they would prefer.
So they had no voice?
They had no voice. And at my position as a teacher.
Justification for that?
This has happened so many times, times, we get these surveys as a teacher, we get these surveys. And so many of my colleagues would say, what, why are we even bothering to fill this out? Because we know, they've already decided what they're gonna do. They just want the appearance of having asked for our input. Uh, but then they're gonna do what they're gonna do anyway.
Okay, you're getting chocolate.
Right. And we're in an age where, you know, we're talking about teacher morale all the time.
Oh, big deal for attention, yeah.
What a bone to toss to say, well, I personally think, you know, this other calendar would be better. And the issue was a few days around the Christmas break. I mean, I, I didn't see it as a make or break kind of deal. Um, unless there's pieces to it that I don't know. But, you know.
Why ask if you're not interested in the answer?
Okay, we're gonna go with the one that you said that you would prefer. I, to me, that's just an easy win for staff morale. And why would you not?
Why ask the question if you don't want the answer?
Exactly.
That's an interesting thought. Well, hopefully, you know, that, that, the communication solves a lot of problems.
Yeah.
Sometimes you don't want, you know, we don't, we don't like the medicine we have to take. And that, I could see how you could probably make that argument, but at the same time, why bring up hopes just to dash them on the rocks?
Right. And I would love, I mean, can we, open communication is one of the things that's most important to me. Because if we're not hearing from our people, um, then we're, we're flying blind.
Well, you seem to be forthright. You have a lot of experience. I, um, um, I'm glad that you took the time to share everything. Um, uh.
Thank you for giving me time. I appreciate it.
Yeah, the detractors that saying, well, can you be a Republican, uh, and still serve the whole county, you're saying?
Absolutely.
Absolutely. Um, the other conversation as well, some of the candidates that don't claim a party and yet you see their affiliations are, I'm deeply funded by Democrats, but I'm an independent.
To me, that's deception. And I don't, I mean, it's, I do too. I, I don't believe in, and that's why I.
I'm not trying to take a side. It's just at some point.
I hear you, Paul. It's just.
You expect some straightforward answers from people.
I would prefer and I have promised myself that I will absolutely be who I am. And.
Good.
Here, here I am.
Good. Well, there you go. Say hi to your audience and, uh.
Darlene Dawson, school board District Two.
You got some presentations coming up, some campaign stops coming forward?
We have the Orange Toberfest up on Short Street this, this coming Saturday morning. Uh, I'll be there pouring for, um, I think Far Gone is the brewery I'll be with on, on, uh, Saturday morning. And then the Deep Roots Fall Festival is the following weekend.
Nice.
Uh, and then of course, sitting there trying to get out there and knock some doors and, um.
Well, how's campaign been? A lot? A lot of work?
It's a lot of work. It really is a lot of work.
Uh, you have sun, so you've been out in the sun. I see that.
I like the sun.
The Rudy complexion comes with a fair skin.
Yes, it does.
Well, I appreciate your time, handshake.
Thank you, Paul. Thank you so much. I appreciate your time.
Absolutely.
And, uh, call me.
And you've got a website that they can reach out?
It's just my name, darlene dawson dot com. There's a phone number there, there's an email there. I have a Facebook page, Darlene Dawson for Orange County School Board.
Questions they can reach out to you on Facebook?
Facebook or.
You don't have a TikTok or any of that or?
No, I'm not, not doing the TikTok thing. You know what? I tried to set up an Instagram account and they shut me down before I posted anything. Your account has been suspended. All, all I posted was my name. So.
I know there's, well, there's some push on anything that's political, being certified. There's a lot of, I know that a lot of people have to sort of go into a third party.
Yeah, to be verified or whatever. So that might be one of those.
And that's expensive, so, you know.
Yeah, I haven't paid for anything. I, my Facebook is just a, yeah, just my own. So, I'm, uh, this is a grassroots effort.
So, early mail-in voting is what date?
This Friday.
This Friday?
This Friday, September twenty-second starts.
So they can do their write-in vote?
Early voting.
And then, uh, uh, how long does that last through or all the way through till?
Mm-hmm, until, uh, the last day, the last Saturday is November fourth and then Tuesday, November seventh is election.
Oh, got it, got it. Don't forget to vote, folks.